You can place me in the elementary school, but it's your decision. You can, you know, we don't know of any SRO programs, but if there was, one, it'd be a police program.
Okay, so my question then is, if we're going to ask these questions and have them clarified and right, what's the job of the task force going to do? Because I'm looking at it more that I have tons of questions, but I'm not quite sure this is the appropriate form to voice them. I would prefer that there be people, and I know that they're working to do this, that investigate these kinds of things. And before this board goes down any loop, I would want to have all kinds of information in front of me, so that I could make the best and most effective decision for the dollars, but also for the safety of our kids. So maybe I'm just, I think you're just trying to do an overview.
Oh, that's what we're doing right now.
We're not trying to investigate.
If, one of the things that, and I'm sort of thinking, you know, we're looking to have the expert come in to look at practice. I mean, that will work with the task force. We're not doing this homegrown.
Okay.
No. The homegrown part is, is just like, you know, what are we, what are the education and educators, because you live in the community. So now, we have the folks who live in the community working in the community, looking at practice, with an outside specialist coming in, going through pros and cons for us. And that's, in fact, I think today you called a few consultants. Remember, the one that was in existence in 2004 is no longer, correct? And I think, Joe, you made some calls.
Yes, I've reached out to a couple of different school districts around the state. One of the things, we're getting a lot of feedback coming across from different groups that want to do evaluations and plans. And this is all in our trying to review and get different school districts that are, I reached out to Ridgefield and some of our various schools to try to get information that we're using. And that's what I think is, it's better the right charge reinvent the wheel on some of this stuff. And the state is also, it's gonna be, the meeting we went to, I think on Monday, was really the tip of the iceberg. It's gonna be a lot more than come up at the state level, as far as training is an opportunity, but they didn't come down for school districts.
Yeah, natural. The group that went Monday, maybe there's a time, is there anything you want to bring to the conversation that was heard that they would be open to us?
To elaborate on what Joe said, the study that we had spent two good years on, from '04 to '06, with the adoption of the board in '06, certainly a lot of the items have been implemented during that tenure of the group plan. Now it's time to go back, take a look at it, refresh it, and bring it up, if we need to bring it up, to the current time that we're operating on. So, having said that, there was also parts of that study, at the end of the study, concerning security and recommendations on particular locations in our buildings, to put in certain security-related items. Card access, cameras, flat pan, or TV sets, of course, we didn't really have flat panel sets, but TV monitors in certain places in the, especially in the principal's office, so they could take a moment and look and make sure that the grounds are secure, and that somebody wasn't crying for help. Things of that nature. Now, we're in the year 2013, and we're taking another hard look at it, and we're making sure that each one of the school's plans are reviewed and that they're up to date. And that's one of the most important things that we can do right now, is look at our plans to make sure that if we need to execute them, we execute them to the best of our ability. The other thing that the plan had brought forth, and it brought forth a whole host of items, radios. You have an FCC license. Your license doesn't expire, I don't believe, until the year 2016. And it allows you to transmit and receive information. Most importantly, a principal or a senior staff at a particular school can talk directly to policemen or a fireman that's coming to their location, depending on what the issue is. So, I mean, we've, we're pretty much along the way where others are starting to catch up to us, or attempting to catch up to us. Having said that, so he says to me, well, do you look at the plan? Why look at plans all the time? I mean, I get plans, I have to review the city's plans, there's board editors in there, your plan is looked at on an annual basis by my office, as well as other facilities around the city that are not part of city government, as required by state law. Having said all of that, I think that the best thing we can do is step back in a moment in time, look at what we have, look at where we want to go, and look at what's best for our children, as a total package.
Was that sort of where you walked away Monday with that symposium area?
Right. The symposium on Monday, from what I heard, unless I heard incorrectly, was that Newtown bought time. Sad. But bought time.
Sadly, initial comments was a task force. I'm very much in favor of a task force. I think the subject matter is time-sensitive. I tend to think in my own mind, the definition of a task force would be something similar to, it's a community, as Ray Brown said last week, this is a community problem, right? Task force should be made up by community members of all respective parties, city, police, fire department, board of ed members, parents, and whoever's on there. The hundreds of questions that are coming in from all parts relative to a matter concerning a building which has nothing to do with us, but is a city problem, of course, their buildings, potentially a policy situation, there's a board of ed problems, I think should be, should discuss at this task force, let the task force be developed, do all of the investigative work, and then make the recommendations to the appropriate party who's responsible for that. The other benefit of that is, by having a task force, it also gives you the opportunity that yearly, this is looked at, not this year or maybe next year, because it's a hot issue and hopefully it'll never happen again, but three years, four years down the road, it just doesn't go away because it's something that, you know, didn't happen, so you move on. But at least it'll be currently up to date, looked at, and planned, being currently looked at, and the public will be made aware that everything is, is being updated. The other consideration I have is, is we here have a responsibility relative to the number of schools. Mr. Valoni has a responsibility for head search system. We have assigned this as a tool for our kids. His kids are our kids. Does the task force, again, will make decisions to encompass Mr. Valoni's operation, should encompass the colonial kids? And I'm not sure how you bring in the daycares. I mean, if I have a child going to a daycare center, how do you bring in educational issues to a daycare, a daycare center, so that they are made aware of certain safety, safety issues there? So, it's broad, I don't want to say that we only have a home-based structure.
Let me take a stab at that one.
Can I answer that question? Oh, daycare, daycare centers send their emergency operations plans to my office, and in some cases, I go to the daycare center, and I sit with the person in charge, and we discuss the layout and the procedures in person. I've done this on more than one occasion, continue to do it when asked. Sometimes I just like to go and look and see what I'm dealing with, if I don't know the area. And being a native boy, I pretty much know the area to some degree, but things do change. So, the daycares are looked at. In fact, I've-
Very comforting to parents who may not know that, but certainly very comforting to, to parents who send their kids to daycare, knowing that it is being looked at, and it's part of a regular procedure. So, you know, I think that's a, you know, comforting, comforting procedure. And again, with this task force, at least it'll be made aware, so whatever we're learning is communicated, and that's the next big thing, is trying to do here is communications.
We invited the private group, because it's a participative, we've sent out messages to them, as recent as yesterday, purchase radios on the same frequencies. I think all the schools are the same way, they're, they're their kids. So, we've invited them. I think the focus, we just can't get 30, 40 people on this thing. It has to be manageable, and have the meetings, and have the work, so that they're part of the process. I talked to Dr. Dane, she's the superintendent of schools, but I understand, she's supporting that. In fact, I think they've been contacted, the same company, Joe, that does our security.
Yes.
So, they've hired them as well. So, I guess, we, we're working together, and we'll continue, and they want to work with us that way, so we'll share that with them as well. I was glad the area of the nursery schools, I had no clue about that.
So, we were together in this task force, or?
Well, I think you need to talk about it, but I'm looking at, the recommendations come to you. I mean, I have, you know, yeah, I care about, I care about my kids here in the elementary school system, you should too. And, and I think those recommendations may come, should come to you, and then, you know, we have city folks, the mayor has been working with us, the city's been working with us. But as far as the private group, though, that's, that takes the recommendations and what they want. But when it comes to the recommendations, I want it to come right to this group here, in a timely fashion, so that something can be done about it. And then, we act on those recommendations. I think that's the way it was handled last time. Is that correct? That would be the right way to go, I would imagine.
When you talk about an expert, is this gonna be funded by the city, or is it, Joey, I need to get a consulting?
I'll take the city funding.
Just asking, just asking.
When we're asking, for example, the radios.
Yes.
There's a grant that may be coming out. We're looking for someone to fund it.
We're, we're swarming all, all avenues of funding, federal, state, and local. So, if there's something that's poking around in FEMA, we'll go after it. Some, the Department of Justice will go after that. If there's some in the Department of Education, and I'm talking federal, we'll go after that as well. For all the recommendations, you know, to the respective department that would be involved, FEMA is, myself, and the fire department. Department of Justice would be the police department. So, those recommendations would either go to your board, or to the city council. Depends on which way it's coming.
I have a question about the task force. What would be the timeline that you would be looking for, for results of the task force?
Look at me. Okay, look at me. I, I think, I think certainly by April 1st, because we're presenting our budget.
Of 2013.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, right, right. Well, this is-
The reason I ask that is because sometimes the task force, you know, they go off into, yeah, 2020.
No, 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 no. I mean, I, that was, that was the other one, they're on, what we're looking at is a task force that would start its work, get moving on its work. And I gotta tell you, I think there'd be some form of recommendations that we ought to just do, and not wait to, if we can do it. But I think that certainly by April, by April in the budget, so we ought to have something in the mix. Let's say you decide, that's right, so you know, if it's a staffing issue, you need to know, quick. So, you know, and we need to, I didn't want to do that without the board saying, that's something we want to do.
Would you develop such a task force? I mean, let's say we, we agree, hopefully we all will, but how would you go about developing and selecting the individuals on it to?
Well, just a, you know, I would take the last one you have, model off of that report.
The, the Board of Education's grant document box, I pulled off the shelf and opened it up again, and pulled out everything that I could possibly find. Tabletop exercises, licenses, everything. And in there ironically was the group that we used to review the schools with consultant, Marshals was a consultant at the time, with Kroll Security, K-R-O-L-L. And all, the majority of those people, some have retired, some are still on the department, are still working for the city, are still working for the school board, and my recommendation would be to the board and to the superintendent, that we would take a look at the outlist again, and utilize those people. And the reason is, they should be, even though it's a little old, but when they did it, at least they understand what they did. And not reinventing the wheel. Not here to exclude it, but I'd rather start with people that I've worked with in the past to execute your grant, than to bring people in and then say, okay, here's what it is, and we get all this paper out there again, and, you know, they agree, disagree, you know.
Yeah, a lot of the way, just clear their table and are ready to do this, I mean, just, you know.
Just a lot of that, you know, I think people have, part of that group would be, some people, parents or something, which the independent citizens would feel they have a representation or expression of this particular issue to, to our folks.
The original document, the, the original grant that should have been with me is a partnership grant, meaning police chief at the time, police chief, what, the fire chief at the time, I believe it was either Chief Zizinski or Chief Kern, myself, the EMS, Mattia Sveckia. We all had to sign on in our respective blocks, and we had to give a deliverable to the grant. We just didn't say, yeah, we're gonna participate. We had to have a particular deliverable, unique to our department, to bring to the grant, to bring to the table, to implement. The grants person ended, ended up leaving, and gone to another school district, from my understanding. I ended up being the project director, which was unique in itself, because the city employee had that permission from the board at the time, and the city council at the time, to be allowed to execute the grant as a project director. It wasn't ever done before. Normally, your grant would be your people. So, as a partnership grant, that's what we executed. I recommend we continue to execute in that format, so we all clearly understand what our roles are, and what we're supposed to provide.
But in the previous partnership grant, were there parents on, were there board of ed members on, do you recall?
I'll tell you, I'll bring, I'll bring the grant application to the superintendent. I think I have it up on my card right now, but I don't want to say yes, they do, because I've got so much with.
There is a little bit of difference here. You were applying for a grant in categories. We don't have a grant to apply for in categories. I, I, you know, I looked at it, Bill gave me that today, as you put on my desk, and I went through it. There are people that are recognizing those, I don't know if it's a grant. It looked like basically the school folks, allowing some representation of the general community, I think, so it had a pretty good mix. And I can't say it was private group like that. But you dealt with pandemics, you dealt with a lot of other issues, right? I'm cutting the sliver out of that. I'm looking at school safety, that sliver. And I think that, you know, we need board liaison folks, we need some of the folks in the city, we need specialists to come in and do the work, sliver out the portion that's dealing with the schools at this point. Because the other stuff that we had, I think it's still pretty active, I mean, we keep it, we have to flip out some of it. So, that's what I'm looking at, just to focus on our campuses. I'm not looking at the, all that you've looked at last time.
The Honeywell system, alert system came out of that grant, and the following year is funding for it. The defibrillators, they were part of that grant. They came, and we got defibrillated all the schools that didn't have them at the time. The radios came out of that grant, and then the planning aspect came out of that grant. So, you had four major items come out of this grant.
Yeah, it was around $200,000.
$284,000, something like that. And by the way, you were one of the few districts in the state of Connecticut to receive that grant.
I, I do like the idea of putting together a group of people, and thank you for keeping it very specific to school safety, which I feel everyone is concerned about. The only question that I have about the task force is, sometimes when putting together a group of people, and you're, you're selecting, or board members, or community members, my fear was that it would be in the selection process, because you don't want 200 people on the task force. You need a smaller group of people, I get that. But you also want that smaller group of people to be very much connected with what parents feel. And I feel sometimes in a selection process, you know, people come to that meeting possibly with their own personal agendas, and I would just want to, I would just want to make sure that the public or the parents still had some kind of voice. Because very often on these committees, you could have parent representation, I'm just using that as an example, and the two parents that are being represented on that committee could have the same opinion about something, but not necessarily be the opinion that 500 other parents have. So, I just want to ensure that parents will have some voice somehow, I don't know how, in this process, and that they're heard. Because I think what came, what, what I felt from our meeting last week was that there was a large group of parents who wanted to be heard, and I still feel that they walked away with some confusion as to whose ball, who's holding this ball now, and where is it going? And I still feel that there are questions, and I think that we need to make sure that they feel that they are part of this process. And I don't know how to do that. I mean, I have my opinions on how to do that, but I just would hope that that would be taken into consideration.
Yeah, I, I would hope, I like the idea, of course, I expect experts to look into school security. So, when you're talking to fire chief, police chief, and, to me, that's a no-brainer, these people have to be on it, because they are the experts there. They know a lot more than I know about, you can show me the plans for any of the schools, and I'd rather have the experts look at it, and then start with that and just build around it, to, you know, try to include some elements from, certainly the school board, or the liaison, or liaisons, and some representative, things from the community, you could get some from PTO, probably, or so forth. But I, that is maybe the problem. But certainly the core, I feel, to me, the people know the most about security, are the experts. You know, I have some grandchildren going to the four-year-olds with their little schools, and now, like I said, I don't want it in my head, I'll listen to proposals and so forth, but I'd like the proposals to be done by the experts.
What do you need from us tonight?
At this point, I think we'll talk about the task force when we talk about the committee selection, so this was just for discussion at this moment, so we'll take that vote later. Yes?
I want to ask one quick question to the other guys who were up there the other day. I think I heard the architect could say that open was better. I think his idea was you're better off to be open and see the bad guy come in than trying to hide the kids in post-bases.
Will know, the, the, will know.
Not just to remind, he was talking about, you know, the glass, so the guy up there, you could see down, and what's your favorite thing about that? Before he spent a quarter of a lane.
I don't know that there's, Gary, I don't know that there's an answer to that. I think, again, it depends upon the local district. I talked extensively with John Brown from the police department about that very topic, because currently we close, we're closing the shades, and he feels very strongly, as does the Dan Ridge police, that he told me that closing the shades is better. We have, I can talk for the high schools, certainly have people there in a security mode that are first responders. And so, again, it may vary in different places, it's kind of a, that's, if I took anything away from that symposium was, there's not one size that fits all, that clearly it's a local decision. And the one thing that I came away with is the real importance of assessing your particular buildings and your district. They stress assessment and prevention a great deal, and I had a really good sense that we're doing a lot of the things that they talked about. But to get specifically to the answer to your topic, I don't think there was anything that was definitive on which way is better or worse. At least that's what I did.
I just brought it up because especially the other night at Broadview, a lot of the parents, the King Street people, seemed to be upset that that was an unsafe situation, and the fact that the architects were talking open was better.
Were you saying, oh, you mean, I thought you were talking window shade.
No, open classrooms.
Oh, okay, that's a whole different.
Remember when the architect was up there, and he had all the ruins, and he had the little square thing over in the classroom, and said, if we take that out, we can see here, and some, you know, there were at least experts out there, I'm talking about experts that think that open classroom thing is, is better, so makes anybody at King Street feel better. There you go.
Thank you. So, you have one last question. Dr. Sudd, you had said that you're looking to take, reinstall, or replace locks, is that gonna be district-wide, the locks, or is that?
Well, let me just, it may be down the road, but there are some immediate things that we've got to do. The first thing we did, so you know, wherever a door can be locked, whether they have a key, and now we're asking every door to be locked. So, in other words, when you go in there, your door is locked, you don't have to fumble for a key, if you're a sub and you don't have a key, that doesn't push your doors or anything. So, the custodians make sure each day, for instance, that all the doors to the, to the classrooms are under the lock mode. That's it. Now, down the road, we may want to go to some other options. There's an option, for example, today, which is, and stuff is involved with-
Yeah, we're, we're, we have a meeting with a couple vendors right now on door lock hardware. Rich and I are working through that, as far as issues where locks and the electronic, on a card swipe, even a classroom lock. Because one of the goals when we go through this is getting away, if we can, getting away from keys. Because obviously, you can rekey a building, and you obviously could lose a key, and literally you can begin helping. So, I think the goal through some of this is to find, find ways that we can actually sustain with, with classroom locks. Also, just for the board's information, Rich and I are kind of taking, let's call it, I think this is gonna sound a little strange, almost like an atypical elementary school, and what do we need in the building? So, we assume, you get to cost out some of the items we're looking, whether it's cameras, you know, door buzzers, all of our schools do currently have, cameras, door locks. So, we're trying to get to a, to a rough estimate on some of our cost initiatives, so we're gonna handle on that. At the same point, we're trying to very search all of what we do, because we have 17, we have 17 schools, I mean, so it's, we're trying to make sure what we do is, is well thought on, well-planned.
And also to be able to communicate to the public, so they know that we're actively working on this, I think it's great for us.
On Paul's point, we've, we've now tested all of our radios we have in district, we're assessing all that we have, we're looking to order more. I've reached out, as I said, to our local schools, and actually our surrounding towns as well, basically to improve purchase for the, I call it, police-issue radio. So, we're trying to also get efficiencies as much as we can through the process as well.
But what obligation do we have at this point, maybe obligation is not, not the correct word, but to get the word out, and how, how do we get this information out to the parents who were at this meeting, who now a week has gone by, and they want to know, what are we doing? And, I mean, I know, Gary, you've done tremendous job at high school, and immediately, and just because I personally, you know, have involvement there, but what are we doing? How are we telling the parents and communicating to them that, we heard you last week, and what are we doing this week? I mean, for them, a week could be, seem like a year, if they're in an emotional state. So, that would be my question.
Well, there's a newsletter going out, and that, there's an article that's, we've asked the principals to host the meeting at their own buildings, and talk to their parents, because they're the ones that, you know, we want, we want to do that. And then, we have a pull-down screen that we started on our website, you know, for folks to do that. So, we're trying those things as best we can to communicate. And I think when, quite frankly, when you have, if we do this task force, that's gonna be covered, we have the table covered there, and sometimes we have-
We have the table covered there and sometimes we don't have anybody there. And I think that's a big help to get the word out. And that's what we'll continue to do. And it's on, we made sure it was, was that behind? But we can have the last week's workshop and tonight's meeting done so we can encapsulate and put it on hams. So we have a multi-classway of doing it. But I think the most important are the principals in the building. I spoke to the PTO Monday night and that's what I think we need to continue to do. Or minutes, whatever I can, on the website. By the way, one other thing on that grant, if I may. Chris and I work very closely with Dr. Dolefsky as well as George James Shields. Those two people there, I know that Dr. Dolefsky retired, but George James is still here. And I see her once in a while here in the building and we talk. And she's spent a lot of time in the script, a lot of time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Motion that the Board of Education approves for 2013 board meeting dates as proposed. Any finding on 13/5? All in favor?
Aye.
Can you post?
Thank you. Budget update. ECS grants, you know, there's been this task force, the Jody Rell task force that's been going on. There's going to be a recommendation that you're going to start reading about for that ECS. It's spent, I don't know, two and a half years. I don't see much of anything coming out of it, but frankly. And they are looking at redefining welches, how they would do that. They want a whole day being, the recommendation is to the governor, what happens, I don't know. Let everybody be held harmless. They've run some models with the proposal of looking at different ways of looking at median income for cities and for towns. And some towns lose money, some towns gain money. I haven't seen Danbury, but, you know, we've never gotten our fair share to begin with, so I don't know. So what they're doing, what they're saying is that we want to hold everybody home harmless. Our formula is not funded to the way it's been legislated. And even bringing it funded up to 50% would be a great thing. That cost is pretty prohibitive. So any recommendation that this task force is making, you can rest assured it'll be a phase in. They're afraid to put a dollar amount on it, knowing that they're faced with $1.2 billion. And if they think to bring parity back into the state and fund it at these levels for equity and justice, they think it would be dismissed, it would be de minimis. They would just say, you've got to be out of your mind, we can't do it this time. So the approach of this committee is to say, look, we have to redefine the system. The system has to hold harmless anyone currently. If you do change it and the amount that you change it, we're not certain at this point, but we need to look at that. And they're doing that mindfully. They're not stepping aside. They think politically it was smart for them to do it this way. So I have this recommendation, it's not a final, it's a draft. When I get the final draft, I'll share it with you. So that's going on. What it means for us as we develop the budget is, I really don't know. You know, the alliance money that we have has really helped us tremendously. 1.7, thereabouts, yeah. The governor has said that that money is going to stay. That's a big part of what we, that's a little bit of what we, and I'm hoping that happens. The rescissions did not affect us. The sequestration at the Fed level, I don't know what's going to happen. Genesis, oh, don't worry about it, it'll pass. I mean, he's been there, he knows. I don't know. But if that happens, that's a quarter of a million dollars. We know it was about 10% to 15% off the top. Joe told me yesterday that a lot of our grants carry a lot of our benefits, which really starts impacting us tremendous. So I'm concerned about that. We have a co-president's clause, we have a group that's going to Washington to do some lobbying. I don't know, maybe I'll have better information for you as we move through. I hope they don't touch that. And, you know, that may happen. Healthcare, you don't want to hear. You just don't want to, you know. I have, I've spoken to a few superintendents and the number 22, 23% increase is not on the table. I said you don't want to hear, didn't I? That's what I said. I threw them out of my office when you go, get out of here. You know, we've talked with the mayor, we've done some conversations about self-insurance. You know, what you're facing this year, the health tax, which is a half a year, about $400,000.
Fully insured municipal plans, any fully insured plan is on the Affordable Care Act starting January 1st, 2014, which our plan goes, there's six months that will impact that. Costs on our fully insured plans are roughly $350,000, which is taxed as long as it's.
So, you know, now, you know, and we've been looking at our monthly reports. Even in the past, they were averaging about 1.2, 1.3. We've had months that were 1.9, $2 million. Now, last month was down to 1.3.
Last month was 1.3. We just resubmitted back this segment for another request against our renewal. And also so the board knows, we are now looking at, as an addition, self-insurance, also pursuing the state plan for renewal and also putting a basis on requests for bids out for our plan.
So, you know.
Do a second. Are you putting our piece out to everybody?
No, right now, I mean, we're going to approach group across. And so we're looking at, let's say, more of the traditional group. Etna, Etna's interesting because obviously they are, they are, no, the state plan is Oxford Health, that's the state plan. Etna's a pretty small player in the municipal market right now. So the question is, is how hungry are they for business? So we, even I did kick that around as well.
Just so the board knows, if we were to choose X, whatever X is, we try to look at companies that are comparable. Of course, the groups have to go with us and we know that the two big ones have the ability for our folks to access the right kind of care. So that's why we're going to look. But the point being is, we're going to look at that and we're going to look at self-insurance. And then there's another hybrid model, which is somewhat self-insured and somewhat.
We could divide our plans, we're basically HSA plans, which borders adopted and some could be self-funded and our PTO plan could be fully insured. And the issue obviously between us and the city is going to be what is known as our reserve fund for claims. So that, and that fund is something basically, the city would backstop us if we did have large claim exposure. We do have what's called stop-loss insurance within our plans. But if you have a lot of people, a lot of small claims that choose into your self-funding. So those are, actually, I have a meeting tomorrow with David Stanley, City Funding Circle. Those are one of the many challenges we're talking about.
So now, you know, we've got those challenges. You know, we have the technology for the company. We also are closing the building over at Mill Ridge and I have eight to 10 classrooms to move, that I need to move. And we need to find a space for that, so that's a rental issue for us. As we, you know, as we, so we have that. We have our enrollment that, right now, thanks to Ann, Jill and the group, we've been trying for a few years. And I think we're here, we're going to start registering by February 1st, all of our kindergarten students so we can have a better indication. And with full day kindergarten in most of our schools, you know, people are more apt to not have to worry about the lottery. That's what they waited in the past. So we're trying to be mindful and collecting as much enrollment to look at this. The graduation requirements, we were told, you know, not to worry about that till 2020. What that's saying to me is that, you know, some of the staffing levels that we need, we may not need them. By redefining our graduation requirements, that's certainly helped us in terms of the rigor while we didn't have to expand the courses. So, you know, so I don't see anything coming down that pipe there. And the other money is going to go to whatever increases we have in salaries. I mean, you can look at the two numbers right here. Best case scenario, if we can get right at this point, even with self-insurance, the quick number is about 11, 12%.
Correct.
Last year was where?
3.7%.
So you know, you can see, you know, how, and now you put what everybody's challenged with, the safety. Okay? I mean, so now you put that, so you can see what we're facing. And nobody wants to, well, you can't put a price on that. Absolutely right. You can't. But, you know, you're a policy-maker group, you're going to have to do what's right. Here's a new question. And you've got to set the priorities for us. So we have a hell of a challenge, you know, this year to do what's right. And I'm not looking for much problems. Maybe we'll have a planning money, that'd be nice, quite frankly, the helpless plan. But I don't see increases coming. I'm worried that ECS, we get about $20 million ECS. I don't know much money because I don't think that's going anywhere.
I'm concerned with the magnet school funding levels. As we know, last year, that was up to, I believe, about $1,500 a student was the magnet increase. We went from $6,700, I believe it's up to about $7,500 or so on the reimbursement for magnet school kids. So I think that's, in looking where the state went for some of their cuts for the first round, I think gives us indications on whether they're going to act of the priority funding and those sorts of things. You know, those are all concerns.
So 1% fund shifts from technology more to security?
Well, yeah, I think, you know, quite frankly, that's right. When this happens, Mark, look, you know what? We need the technology and we're working on a plan. But right now, I need, we need some money to sell these things. I don't have the money to fund the security folks. I don't have money to put these, the doors over at King Street. We don't have the kind of cash. So I need that help, you know, it's what we've got to go to, no question. I mean, that's what we're doing. I mean, there are other challenges in here with our curriculum development, all of that stuff, teacher evaluation. If we didn't have the alliance money, we might as well pack up our bags here. You know, I mean, I'm just like, yeah, I'm really worried about that. So that's what we're dealing with.
And we don't have a lot of movement on this call. Our other cost front, our utility kilowatt is still locked. It was on our city grid for another year. You know, we just shot two years on that grid, so there's really no movement on that front. Obviously, we've got some on our actual heating costs. Natural gases comes down some, but we take some heavy cuts against that in last year's budget. But we're working every angle we got, I've got to say that, to be honest.
Can I get a budget?
Yes.
Yeah, you do, actually. They're not cutting any money out of a building as I am for bonds. So that money, $40 million, I think we're going to be good there. So the expansion projects, we have been meeting. They've made some adjustments on, they've met with, they being the city and the architects. They've met with us, met with principals, met with faculty at the buildings. And they've been very, they've listened to us and they've made a lot of adjustments, we think, to the benefit of the programs. One challenge that we were faced with was our real deep concern regarding Mill Ridge intermediate or assumed to be magnet school for the middle school, the width of the hallways. It was an elementary and there are no lockers there. And in order to put lockers, you'd have to knock down retaining walls. But actually, out of a problem came a wonderful solution in some ways, I think. You know, we were able to look at a commons area for lockers that was contiguous to a media center or the cafeteria area, so there's a good flow. So when you walk into this thing, there would be a student come in, there'd be a locker area, there'd be the ability to go to the library, the ability to have a commons area. And then that's where we would have the lockers. So that worked out kind of synergistically very well. But we were really, we didn't know how we were going to solve that. So they listened and they helped out. The other challenge is over at Park, the egress or the transportation, the loop, the transportation is a big, big issue. And the problem with this project is because they don't know how the money is going to come in or the bids, these things are being bid in what they call supplements.
Alternates.
Alternates.
So any of the parking lot additions, which are alternates on the plan. So actually, all the schools are alternates. MRE and the Park Ave and Stadley are all alternates.
And now that the architect has some idea, we ought to have a better sense of the numbers, right?
Yeah, just thought to free, to phone in a couple of questions on some of the things, but they're actually in the process of getting some of those estimates right now. So if he told me a week or so, he should have some broad ideas.
All right, good, that'd be helpful. So I think the projects are moving forward. What I don't know is that do they start them all at the same time? I have no idea how they're going to, I'll ask that question for us. We know that we can't, they would like to start over at Mill Ridge early, but I don't know how. We have eight classrooms, he has his classrooms there. So we can't start until we leave. And they could set up with stuff like they did at the high schools, but they can't do it anymore.
They can't do it.
Now, does that mean they could start at the other three places? I just don't know. So we'll get a better idea for that and then we'll have some information.
So you mean by alternative, you mean it could be dropped off the plan?
Yes. Yeah, it's not, yeah. And, you know, like I said, MRE, we know what that's like up there for busing and those loops. And Park Ave as well, so you know, those are all.
Yeah, and I want to give it to the city to do. I mean, they know that some things they can't do as alternative, they know how important it is.
I just wanted to know that that terminology meant that it could be scrapped?
Oh, yeah, it could be.
But for example, the high school with the window project, they had some money left over.
Yes.
And they're able to do some things that I don't want to announce here because it's premature.
Yes.
But it just is premature because the bird isn't on the hand yet.
Well, the blinds, which now are going to, is large, we're going to now, that wasn't part of the original project.
The city has really been, what I and Tony has been, they have some extra money, they want to do what's right. And, you know, if something comes to fruition, it'd be something we've always wanted and it could happen to the high school, so we'll know more about that. So I think that they're really trying to push to get the numbers as close as they can that they can deliver the project and make sure that we have a quality space for our kids. And I don't see them coming from a different point of view. Now, anybody else want, the only other thing of the expansion that we need to be concerned about, Bill's putting out the surveys, you know, on the schools, we're doing that. We're going to have some, that's going to be going out on monkey, what is that thing? Get the monkey off my back. But we need to do that and then do that planning. We're trying to figure out if we should pilot the new academy, just so that we open the academy that we have, you know, a curriculum has been tried. We have some students ready to enroll in there instead of starting from scratch. I mean, those are things that we're trying to figure out. In the budget, you're going to see, you know, if we're going to open a building a year from next September, we're going to have a planning principle. You're going to have to decide with me if you're going to do that, you know, we're going to have to do that and hire someone and then start maybe second semester, put a staff together, get the curriculum going together. So, I mean, that's all part of it. And you're going to see that in the budget as well. So, you know, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be done, a lot of exciting things. We're going to have to deliver those things, right? Any more on the expansion? Anybody wants to add to it or any board members have any questions?
Should be scrapped. You mean that in a situation of Park Avenue, that school wouldn't be revamped or expanded by another site?
The, what, right now, the main part of the project is the actual physical additions. So the classrooms on each of the schools are the main part of the project. That's priority first funding. Alternative would be any of the exterior additions. So it will be repaving and redesign of the Park Avenue parking lot system and the busing loops. All of that is alternatives. And Mill Ridge is kind of a similar situation as is Stadley, so all those.
So that would be the element that would be scrapped?
Correct. But actually, I mean, like I said, a lot of those sites are very challenging. So Park Ave, do you want?
The survey that went out to parents in elementary school about if you were to go to a middle school, what type of middle school, that went out in paper form. Was there a date to receive that by? And is this survey monkey that you're going to do be just another way to survey that same, those same questions?
Survey, the survey that went out in paper form was just to give parents a heads up and give them the opportunity at their leisure to read through it. Survey monkey is going to be the actual survey. So they ask them to go online based on that form.
Anything else on the building that we?
No, I mean, part of the things we're looking at with Paul and Sal, obviously, some of the building layout things. I mean, MRE obviously pretty much is an existing floor plan, but I mean, we're going to look at some of the security issues as far as the different things we do within the design. Now, things in major, but I'm obviously that some we're going to evaluate, you know, what locks and door hardware winds up in there and that sort of thing. Obviously, that's, and Tony is well aware of that, we're working through that with the city. And as Sal said too, the city has been great, they're working a real partnership.
And we're looking at cogeneration kinds of, you know, and stuff over at the STEM Academy and stuff. So they're really helping us make it a different place, I thank them, thanks. College Board STEM, I talked about that before. We, I don't, you know, we got that thing, we were called on a vacation, you know, this is something that we'd like to have your district participate in. And, you know, what does it mean for us? Apparently, what it means for us is that, you know, we could send folks to the travel, to work with other STEM teachers and for workshops and for professional. Now, there is a segment in here that was about supplies and they started, what is that online program called?
Donor, donor.
Donor, yeah. It's funded by Gates Foundation, but it's in the paperwork I gave you. We, I'm still, we're working with the teachers' union because we want to make sure it's not a payment kind of thing. We thought initially it was, but I don't believe it isn't. If things go well, I think if it stays the way it is, all it is is they'll give them a card and the teacher can buy supplies for their classroom. a card, and the teacher can buy supplies for their classrooms. So if that's the way it is, I think it's, we'll find we move ahead. So I'm talking to the senior right now about that, we said, we just got the material the other day.
Donors choose.
Is that what it's called?
Donors choose.
Donors choose, yeah. So, so that's, that's, that helps tremendously on the STEM, I think, and it means right to what we're doing at the STEM Academy and stuff. Meeting with the commissioner and teacher evaluation, that is, that is, you know, whatever else on our table. I'm, there's been pilot districts, and they've been giving feedback to the commissioner, the commissioner convened a group of us a few weeks ago, we had a conversation yesterday with some follow-up reports. It looks to me, if I'm reading the tea leaves, that there's gonna be some flexibility. They're learning from some other states. That, and what that flexibility may be, I'm not certain, it may be a phasing, or I'm just not 100% knowing, but I think some things will be coming down the pipe. I think, you know, at the end of this month, there's the, the PE committee, which was, the committee that was charged to look at teacher evaluation, they're gonna meet and I guess meet the commissioner, and at that meeting, they'll be making recommendations to us. So I'll know more there about what we're gonna do. Corollary to that, we were told that, you know, moving forward in the legislature, there's a, a proposal for no money, don't do kind of thing, you know, second to graduation requirements, that in fact, if, you know, the funding doesn't come through, that perhaps that the program is delayed for a year now. We just found that out recently, there is a bill, I forget the, who put it into here?
Cameron Sawyer.
From, from Bolton. There is, and whether that gets legs or not, I don't know, but there's some movement there. So I, I think the commission has been mindful to hear and listen, that there are some good things to be done here, the pieces with the student growth and how to assess that, you got S-Back coming, CMTs and CAPS leading, you know, how do we look at this, how does it impact the teaching line of piece? You know, the ability to look at teacher evaluation the way we are, and accountability and administrative accountability and growth is a good thing, but you're starting to hear that this is something that's pretty big, and maybe you need to think about how you can do this right. So let's see what happens at the end of the month. You were at the meeting the other day.
It's just, it's come down to a manpower thing. You can come up with the greatest plans, but if you don't have the personnel to carry them out, it's smoke.
Yeah. We have it calculated where it's, I think, about 61% of the time with the principal. If everything was perfect, would be spent on this process. 61%. And that is the minimum amount of time that the, that the law says, not what PE, which we, not what the CE document is saying. So we, we know that, so we have some ideas about what to do, but let's see what happens here at the end of the month. We may have some flexibility. The current plan's a good plan, in the, we could visit it, but it was three, it's a three-year plan. The plan now calls for everybody we've seen every year. That's the juggernaut right there. Every, every year. Sit down, observation, that, that's, that's the juggernaut. So we'll see what happens with that. Let's see, what else we have? Redistricting, we have a lot of good stuff going on down here. I think the board's going to have to think tonight about whether or not they wanna continue the liaisons that are there. This is not gonna affect us from a year from next September, but we wanted to start this now. We have the, the report we did last year, we have a lot of the criteria. I said to you, there might be an outside group to help us out, and some of them were too pricey, but we found someone that might be feasible, that can look at our work and give us some outside eyes on this thing. But I think we need to have a liaison, a committee start working, and getting parents getting involved in this thing, so we can have some recommendations to the board by next, by next year, so we can put it in the next year plan. Anything else on redistricting?
No, just, we, we did get some pricing, a couple consultants, I mean, some are, you know, a little more astronomical pricing, we think we found one somewhat reasonable, could do some of the, the analysis and the data work. It's also done redistricting plans before, so it's a helpful set of lines to the process that you've dealt with, that are really helpful.
So can I just have clarification? So is the construction, the new building, the expansion project, is that driving the redistricting? So is the, the expansion should be done by 2014?
Yeah, you know, right now, you have the sister school, that's been working, right? So we have that. But when we open these new buildings, we have, I'm hoping 18, right, but they keep telling us 60.
It's still 60, so.
I can't get to them.
Three days, try that one or two.
Yeah, you have to, you forget, you forget, give us two more. But you're gonna, you know, and we have to stay, we have to figure out the areas that we were growing, and then redistribute the students by that time when they open. That's what, that's what we, yeah, a year from next September.
The fall of '14.
Fall of '14. By then, we should be able to.
September's a special issue, but is that a perfect date for the, or no, that's a different date?
No, it's, I mean, as of right now, everything.
That's gonna be a big blue ribbon.
That's gonna be a major year.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, as you know now, folks, when we open that building, we're faced with that staffing and all of that. The only good thing that you have is that would be the year of the lead.
The early hiring.
Which was, was playing. Because that 1.2 million, that 1.2 million comes to, you know, where? Without with the staffing.
Okay.
Thank you, that's enough, you took that little.
Yeah, there was information, so we'll have to go into that tonight. And, okay, my report. For the, okay, five minutes, talk fast, okay, for the, for the board report. At your place, there was PTO assignments and new board committee assignments. I didn't really change any of the PTO assignments, I didn't hear anybody that wanted to change, so if you do, please let me know. Also, the assignments were made for the board committees, so if, you know, you would like those changed, please let me know. But I would like to, I had a request that the committee or the finance committee actually be moved into an action item, and that we vote that committee in, because Joe wants to, or we agree to that committee right now, because Joe wants to go ahead and try, yeah, Joe wants to try to go ahead and have that committee meet next week.
We haven't put that down since.
So Joe, you go ahead and do that. Okay? So that committee is on our list as well. Also, when we met for our workshop, we had recommendations, and I think Debbie put at our place, we had a few things that we went over, and they were, for example, like the one for the, for the meadows for public use, those seven items and those sub-items. I need a little feedback from the board. We don't have to do that tonight, we can put it into the next agenda, but, right, you don't have that? Okay. Whether we wanna act on that, and how soon we wanna act on that? Okay. We'll include that in the next board meeting.
That's true.
You don't have any of that? Okay, then Debbie will, we'll have Debbie put that into our board minutes for the next meeting. They were things like our automatic, auto needed response to the emails, and what kind of information we wanted to receive, and from our workshop, and a list of tasks that we wanted to get done, et cetera. There were like seven items in there, subset. So I think it's something that we need to revisit again, so between the length of this meeting, maybe we could put that on the agenda for most of next month as well. And also on that was the topics that were presented and the updates. So we'll include that, just so we can touch base and see if we're staying on target of what we as a board want to hear and want to progress on. Okay? And the other thing was, we wanna go ahead and somehow form this ad hoc safety committee. So I don't know if, I'm not sure how to do that, being a new chair, I don't know if we, Sal talked about having eight to 10 possible people on this committee, and one or two of them to be board members, so I'm really not sure how we go about doing that.
Then we're trying to volunteer.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else? So maybe I will take volunteers, and then I'll sit with, okay.
No.
Okay. Okay. That's okay. Okay, great. And the other committee would be the, for the safety. Okay? And also for the redistricting committee, we need some individuals who would like to be on that one as well.
There was some, people that were on.
Yeah, right. I, I don't know who they were.
Were you on the redistrict?
Okay, all right. Okay.